... Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the oath of office to our newly elected board members. Mr. Brandon Atwood.
Ernie?
And yes, I have the oath of office, and if both new board members would join us, just stand if you want to come out here.
Do I need to do this again as well?
I'll do it.
Oh, separately?
Yeah, we'd already... No, we'll do yours. You're right, Scott. Come on down. See, that's what happens when you've been around for a while.
Yeah.
You have to make it official.
Okay, if you would, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as member of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws near now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? The answer is, I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. Congratulations to the new welcome. Scott, I don't know how I went through that. And I'm going to have you sign the oath, and we will also get a copy to you as well.
Okay, item four is the roll call. Please call the roll, Mr. Strauzer.
Scott Dracy.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Atwood.
Present.
Ballard.
Here.
Item five is the election of president. May I have nominations for president?
I nominate Jerry Scott Dracy.
Second?
I second.
We have the nominations.
Okay, we'll only need the motion now to... Actually, it was just a motion, Scott nominated Jerry Scott Dracy, and we will now need a motion and a second to close nominations.
I make a motion to close.
I'll second.
Mr. Bryant moved. The second was Mr. Atwood. Thank you. Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. The next item is the oath of office to the president.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as the President of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? The answer is, I do.
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Item six is the election of a vice president. May I have nominations for election of a vice president?
I nominate Tim Bryant.
We have Tim Bryant. Are there any other nominations?
Is there a motion to close nominations?
I'll make a motion to close. I'll second.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as the Vice President of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? The answer is, I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Item seven is the appointment of chairpersons and board representatives. The president has the option to make appointments to standing committee. I would like to appoint Scott Faulkner to our finance committee. Amber Ballard to our education. Tim Bryant to our building and grounds. And Brandon Atwood to our policy committee. Our board of representative for the Great Oaks Board is currently Lynn, and I believe she has two years left. I would like to allow her to stay on as our rep for the Great Oaks Board. That's okay with everyone. And Scott will have communications with her, so he can report. The board representative to the Norwood Community Television Board, Scott Faulkner. The board representative as OSBA Legislative Liaison. Ernie, who do we normally have do that?
Ken had done that in the past.
Okay, I can do that. The OSBA Student Achievement Liaison. Amber, would you be willing to do that?
Yes.
And the appointment of the treasurer to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
I nominate Brandon.
Well, the treasurer is on that, so that will be Ernie.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And then we have the appointment of the Public Records Liaison, which is Heather Cole. May I have a motion for approval of all these appointments?
So moved.
First by Mr. Faulkner. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ballard. Please call a roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item eight is the establishment, time, date, and location of school board meetings. This year, we decided to change it up a little bit and have committee meetings on in different locations around our district. Our January meeting, of course, is here in the Norwood Library. Our regular meetings will be held at the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium on January 19th. Our February committee meeting will be at Williams Avenue Elementary Cafeteria, with the February regular meeting being at the high school mini auditorium. March committee is at the middle school auditorium, and the regular meeting will be at the high school. The April committee meeting will be at the board office, with the regular meeting being in the middle mini auditorium. The May meeting will be at the board office, with the regular meeting being at the mini auditorium. And in June, July, and August, we will have both committee and board meetings at the board office location. September, our committee will be at the board office. October, at the board office. Both those locations for regular meetings, all of our regular meetings will be held at the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium. November and December, our committee meetings will be at the board office also. Now, I have a motion for approval of all of our committee and board meetings.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Bryant? May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ballard. Any discussion?
I want to note that the December meeting, typically, we have meetings on the third Thursday of the month. On December, that will be held on the second Thursday of the month due to the holiday. Right up against that schedule, just to make note that that week will not be the third Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one item, so we seem to bounce around every elementary school except for Sharpsburg. And is there any reason why we're not visiting Sharpsburg in this rotation?
We did that last month.
You did that last month?
Yeah, last place.
Is it possible to schedule that again since Brandon and I did not get a chance to do that? Maybe later in the year?
Possibly.
To be determined.
Maybe even get north in there if we're at, or if we could get Cincinnati Public to let us back in our own building.
I live on the same street as that school. I'd be happy to do that.
I would love to see it, yeah. I'd love to see it inside.
Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. The next item is the Board Service Fund. It is recommended to set the Board Service Fund at $5,000 for the calendar year 2018 from the general fund. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Please call the roll.
And just a reminder, the Board Service Fund, since we have a couple of new board members, that's used to support professional development opportunities for the Board of Education. Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item ten is setting the bond for president, superintendent, and treasurer. May I have a motion for setting the bond? Any discussion? Questions?
So moved.
Scott moved, or Mr. Faulkner moved?
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 11 is authorization for the treasurer. Item A is a resolution requesting advance in taxes from the county auditor. Item B is approval of the 1819 annual tax budget and updated financial forecast. Any discussion? Mr. Strauzer?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do also have the public hearing scheduled for the tax budget, and I was going to talk a little bit about that. The tax budget is a document required by the county auditor to... It basically mirrors the general fund forecast that you approved in October, and the tax budget is done for any fund that receives local tax collection. So that would include the general fund, permanent improvement fund, and also the debt service fund now. And in essence, we have reflected the revenue expected from our millage and valuation and the debt payments, for example, or permanent improvement expectations, just as a budget.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 12 is authorization for the superintendent. The superintendent shall appoint all employees and report such actions to the Board of Education at the next regular Board of Education meeting. Any discussion?
So does that mean that the board is not in on decisions for new hires?
Um, not necessarily, no. She... We usually take her recommendation. She usually, most of the time, will tell us ahead of time so that we can let her know whether we have any concerns or... It's her job to do that.
And most often, that resolution is to authorize in-between board meetings where there's maybe, especially in the summer, a teacher opening or other type of position that needs to be filled by the start of school. It's common language, and it's been past practice for quite some time.
Further discussion? May I have a motion for approval?
Who moved?
So moved.
Mr. Faulkner? May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Atwood?
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 13 is adjournment. I have a motion for adjournment. Also, by Mr. Atwood, second by Ms. Ballard, by 146.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
I like the new forms. That was Ernie or Kathy's doing, but I like the forms.
Tax committee?
Yeah. We open a meeting for tax committee?
We can do the public hearing next, yes. Then the committee isn't. You don't have an agenda for the tax budget.
No, no. There's a tax committee in the middle.
There's a public hearing. Is there a folder for that one? Okay, I think I'm the only one that has an agenda. I'll just give it to Cherry. She'll be fine. She'll be fine. Yeah, they are here. Thank you. Sorry about that. Just in a different location. If you take one of those, pass it down.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to call to order the Norwood Board of Education public hearing agenda for January 9, 2018. Please call the roll.
Atwood?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Faulkner?
Here.
Ballard?
Here.
Scott Dracy?
Here. Item three is the annual tax budget for 2018-19 school year. Discussion of the annual tax budget 1819.
We are a little bit out of order here. The tax budget is posted to our website, so it is available there as well. I'm going to give you a couple of particulars here with respect to the local revenue. In 2018, for the calendar year 2018, we are expecting $15,390,000 in local tax money. That's a result for the general fund of the levies that our taxpayers have approved. We expect that $15,390 to go to $15,676 in calendar year 2019. So we're expecting a little bit of growth there. As I mentioned to you, we had some new construction on commercial property that has helped a little bit to grow that, and we also had a little bit of increase in just our overall values as well. As I mentioned earlier, the main reason for this tax budget is to address the local tax revenue components. The other two funds that receive local tax money, first, the bond revenue fund, which was the levy passed in November 2016. We expect the 2018 revenue from that levy, from the local taxes collected, to be $1,732,000. And we expect a modest increase on that one as well. Keep in mind, it's a newer levy and not as much delinquency buildup, to be $1,755,000 in 2019. Now, just as a point to that, if you are keeping a little bit of track there, this is just about balance. So in 2018, we're expecting a little bit of additional state reimbursement. Total revenue will be 1.8 million, $1,882,000. And we're expecting expenditures for principal. Debt retirement will be $485,000, and interest will be $1,287,000. So we do expect the fund to grow just a little bit, even in this first year of collections and payments. The final fund that receives permanent improvement money is the permanent improvement fund, and we do have a continuing permanent improvement levy that was also passed in November. And the 2018 calendar year revenue, and again, taxes are collected on a calendar year basis, the 2018 collections are expected to be $935,601. And the 2019 revenue is expected to be $946,916. And as you may recall, this levy is... will also help support the construction project. It's used simply, strictly for capital, equipment, and building improvement. Those are our three funds, and again, I apologize for not having copies of this. It was my hope to put this up on the screen for you tonight, but Mr. Yates did his part, but unfortunately, my computer was in about a 20-minute cycle of updates, so when I turned it off from the office and came here. There is no action now required on that, but there's certainly open, Madam President, for comments and further discussion.
So on the overall, so we get our money from two different sources, right? So once the Ohio Department of Education income, and then the most of the remaining of it comes from the local tax income.
Yes.
So what's the split?
The split is that we... Our local tax component is actually the slightly larger part, about 55% of our overall budget. The next significant component to that, there is a reimbursement part from the state for those local taxes, and I... Those are driven... When you look at your tax bill, you'll see a discount on there or a reduction, and that's being paid by the state as part of that reimbursement. So there can be an argument that that's a total local piece as well. And you're quite right, the next largest part is our state funding, per pupil funding from the state of Ohio. And then other revenue includes tax incentives, for example, that payments from developers and for property in Norwood, and that is in the neighborhood of about $2.5 million.
Repeat that last part again?
The tax incentive?
Yeah.
The... Those tax incentive payments that we receive for commercial property that has been incented through city and action, the payments that they make total approximately $2.5 million.
So this is, let's say, property that the city... I just want to make sure I understand this correctly.
Sure.
That this is property that the city may have given an abatement on?
Mm-hmm.
But we would still want to negotiate?
There's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes?
Yes.
Okay. Right. It's exactly what I was thinking.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
What percentage of our money comes in from grants currently?
I don't have that number, just walking around number, because there are a number of funds with grants. We have Title I, Christina. Chesson manages a number of grants. We have, for example, 21st Century, the after-school program, but in terms of the total overall, those are not general fund dollars. I don't have that broken out, but I'll be glad to get that for you and send it to you.
Thank you. Next item is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll make that motion.
Mr. Atwood and Ms. Ballard?
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
And Madam President, our final meeting before the committee meeting is our records commission meeting. This is an annual process that we go through as well. I'm going to hand out if there is action for this meeting.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Norwood Board of Education Records Commission meeting, January 9, 2018. Please call the roll.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Here.
Item three is the approval of records retention schedule, Form RC-2. Mr. Strauzer, would you let us know what that is?
Sure. Yeah, let me go ahead and talk about that for a moment. The Records Commission of Ohio Historical Society has a standard protocol for timeline of maintaining records and also whether they can be in both paper and electronic format. We are not deviating from that. It's about a 15-page document, but that document essentially covers all of our records and the ability to dispose of records when it's timely to do that and allowable by law. And so really, this is an annual process that causes us to go through. Heather Cole is primarily in charge of that in my office, and we go through that annually and look at the records that are eligible for, you know, if we can remove records. But again, that's a standard process, and it's not something we create. It's strictly prescribed by the state.
Any questions or discussion? May I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Mr. Bryant, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner.
Bryant?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item four is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Mr. Atwood? Ms. Ballard? Second.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
So just a question. Do you have that open and closed as separate meeting entirely just for that?
And I am going to pass this down, but we'll also send you a copy of this electronically that has the record retained. And our next items, committee review.
Welcome to our pre-agenda for committee review, January 9, 2018. Item A, discussion items. Under discussion items, we have the construction update.
Thank you, Madam President. We wanted to just simply keep you up to date and let you know what took place over a while break with the installation of the doors. And of course, many of you are familiar with the access to the door, which would be a swipe card of sorts, so we've been updating that software system, and we're still working on that now. I've invited John Keer, who's working very closely on this entire construction project. John, is there anything you'd like to add or have been looking forward to? John, is there anything you'd like to add or have been looking forward to? About what's going on with the break?
Just before winter break, we got the secondary wall of set of doors installed at the middle school. Right as break began, we got the secondary wall of doors at the high school installed. And over break, the company was able to get the access control card readers installed and operational at all of the school buildings, as well as the controllers at the receptionist desks, and able to open those doors as visitors come in. Did have a bit of a glitch as schools started last Wednesday, but the majority of the badge is not working properly. We did figure that out, and were able to start using the new key fobs that came with the contract. So we started programming those and getting them operational and working. That alleviated most of the problems that we ended up with late last week and early this week. There is going to be a training for the door controllers, for the receptionists. Mostly, it's the same type of system they're used to working with, but it is a different model. So we are going to do some training this upcoming Friday on the in-service day. So hopefully, we can better understand some of the bells and whistles that the system has in place.
Our turn, attention then turns to the next phase of the construction, and that is the middle school. As you know, the middle school, we were first to get the new heating and the new air conditioning system. So right now, we're, which they are very excited about the air conditioning. So right now, we're in the design stage, because in early February, at the latest, we really want to go to bid and find out exactly which company it is that will take this. So our charge right now is to get the design part as close to absolute perfect as possible so that, one, we can estimate cost with our architect, but also that we get the best person to bid, for all kinds of people to bid, but to drive up that interest. And then, that there are very few change orders after we select someone to carry out the work. So that's where we are now. We're actually going to SHP next week to look at a three-dimensional rendering online of the work that's proposed. And they have given us multiple hard copies for us to review, and so teams of folks are going through that room by room. Where will the lights be placed? There are drop ceilings presently in this room, so those will be replaced. Where will the projector be? Things of that kind of nature. What toilets and commodes will be replaced? Much of the plumbing will be replaced, and of course, plumbing fixtures will be replaced. John, is there anything you would add to help them to understand the magnitude of the middle school project, which is actually why we started there, because the magnitude we anticipate is?
There's probably 50% roofing issues that will be included in that. Heating and cooling aspects, I can imagine.
Are there any accessibility updates being made, such as the elevator that is about that big?
Yes.
Railchair ramps?
Yes. An elevator is part of the plan.
Okay.
Yes, it is, a much larger elevator. Not at the present place, the one we have now. Right now, it's proposed, if you are facing the auditorium, it's in that set of windows to your right. So not in the auditorium, but in the main hallway.
Okay.
And it will run, there's kind of a, yeah, there's an area there that we think will host that very nicely.
Where will the outside entrance be?
So interesting you bring that up. So we considered, that will go from, of course, the bottom floor to the third floor. And so the entrance to that would be, I always get confused, is that the girls' entrance?
It's the girl's entrance.
It's the girl's entrance.
Okay. You do the girls' entrance?
And then there'll be a ramp?
Yep.
So right now, there are two present wood doors. Instead of going up the steps, there are two wood doors there that take you down to the functioning part of the building. That would be made into a hallway where you could access the elevator there. And we're excited about the potential of what that elevator will mean for the students who are there now and all those that are coming. And then, of course, for all the guests that come there to use, to be in the auditorium for concerts and things of that nature.
I do have a couple of questions. So with the scope of the middle school project, we are looking at going to bid in February, is that correct?
That's right.
So has SHP, which I guess is our general contractor, the architect for this, have they advised us what we think a competitive building is going to look like?
That's the process we're in right now.
Okay.
And we're looking at each individual item as to how much that would cost. And we're deciding what's more important. For example, the elevator is very important to us.
Right.
So we're figuring out what really is extraordinarily important and how we can get the job accomplished. So SHP is the architect, they are not the general contractor.
Okay.
Not at all the general contractor. That's what we will bid for.
Okay, so we're going to bid for a general contractor?
That's right.
Okay. Just want to make sure I?
No, that's a good, great question. And there is a huge distinction between the two.
So if it goes to bid in February, we're hoping to have qualified bids back by, what, mid-March? April, maybe?
And usually, it only takes two, three weeks by the time we start getting the bids back in.
The projected construction timeline is that they would begin in early May.
Okay.
And what we're working on now is, as you know, that building is being used by many students, not just during the school day, but well into the evening. So the challenge is keeping it operational, but yet making way for an entire section. So in the plans right now, the entire west wing, again, these are the plans right now, the entire west wing and portions of the front of the building will be, they'll be working on them right away in May, and they will be ready for us to be using them August the 17th. So there's a couple of groups of students that want to move out of the way for that construction to begin in early May.
Got you.
So then, when that's completed, that will be air-conditioned and heated, and of course, we'll move the residence of the building over to the other side, and then we'll work on that other side.
Okay.
And then, as the construction plans, as you know, the board has approved that, that once those folks are able to move over, they can work on the east side of the building. And then, before we go to bid for all of the elementaries, we have the opportunity to move those sixth graders up to alleviate some space in the elementary, so the construction can take place there.
So we can do the same thing?
Exactly.
Instead of seven tenths already in place?
Right.
Right now, sixth grade is coming down.
They will in two years, for construction purposes. And I'm sure they'll be really excited to have the air-conditioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. The next item on here is a discussion item of the grant writer. And Mr. Atwood, I'll return to you. Can you stand with me to discuss the potential of a grant writer for the district?
Absolutely. So as I was reviewing some documents that Ernie had passed over to me when I was preparing for this position, you know, I took notice that the state of Ohio considers our district to be a wealthy district, even though the average salary income for the average family is not reflective of that. It's because we have higher property values than most surrounding districts. And because of that, the funding that we typically, or a lower-income-earning district would get from the state is reduced, because you're liable on those incomes. So, you know, right now, our financial situation looks, looks okay, but as we start looking down in a couple of years, we're going to start trending off towards close to break even. And without having to go back to the taxpayers and say, hey, we need, we need more money in order to keep ourselves in a growing position, you know, how do we prolong that process? And something that a lot of other districts are starting to do, and it's been a trend that I've researched that has been going this way for about 10 years now, is a lot of other districts are starting to employ, or actually put on their staff, a position of a grant writer. Now, this is a full-time salary position, and then this person would almost act as a support role for other teachers and other people. And this person would have experience and knowledge to navigate the grant-writing process to increase our chances of winning more money back into the districts. And there is a lot of different ways that, and a lot of different programs out there that you could go out and get money for. Now, we have some great grant programs already established in the district. You know, the, absolutely, the 21st Century is one thing. But what we're doing right now is we're relying on current staff members to take part of their time outside of their duties to do this. And I think it would be a better service to the district if we actually looked at our organizational structure and say, can we find a permanent position for somebody who does nothing but that? The risk is, the risk is, is that, yes, we are going to increase our employee count by one, so we're going to hire somebody, we're going to pay them a salary, and we're also going to pay them benefits. That's the risk to the district. But the benefit is, is that this person could potentially bring in, you know, hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars a year that could augment some of the other programs, tremendous programs that we have. So this is something I wanted to bring up now, early, because I think the sooner that we decide whether or not this is the direction we want to go in, if this is a direction that the board wants to go in, you know, we start navigating the process of how this person fits in to our organization, you know, what this position would ultimately look like, and start the process of actually going out and sourcing others. So I leave it open to discussion with my fellow board members. I mean, I'm in favor of this, I think this is a great opportunity. I know the New Richmond District is doing something extremely similar to this, and they were able to get smart boards for just about all of their classrooms through somebody who had participated in programming. So there's all kinds of opportunities.
Do you know about what a base salary would look like? And then maybe possible commission?
So that's a great point, and I have done some research on that. So a typical base salary for a grant writer in this region would fall anywheres between $40,000 to $70,000 a year, depending on experience, and commission is extremely frowned upon. So a lot of grant program awarders don't want to award grant money to somebody who's going to be directly profiting from it. So commission is frowned upon.
But you said benefits as well?
Well, and, you know.
Also, package?
Yeah. Insurance, all that kind of stuff. I mean, I.
I know we've looked at this in the past, and the problem, and actually, Deb Robinson, when she was brought on, Deb writes, Chris writes, and somebody else writes.
Laura writes.
Laura Ferguson writes, right. So I know we have several that do it, and then the problem we get into is when we, because I think it's a great idea, I think it's something we need to consider really heavily, but if we do it, we need to dedicate the person to it and not put them with other tasks, because once we get them in and start doing other tasks, we rely on them to do other things, and then the next thing you know, they're a part-time grant writer.
No, I don't, I would not want to see a part-time grant writer. If we do this, I would want this person to have full jurisdiction of our grant programs. And, you know, I think we would find out very quickly, within a couple of years, if this program or this person is successful. Because if they're doing their job, then, you know, we're getting a lot of grant income money into the district nominating programs. If they're sitting on their thumbs, then we're going to know really quickly.
Now, would this person also be someone that teachers could reach out to for assistance in writing, like smaller classroom grants?
So in my mind, I would see this person kind of like in a support role, right? I don't know if they would necessarily fall under the NTA agreement. They would probably more likely fall under the other support staff agreement, but this is somebody teachers could come to and say, hey, I have, I know of a great grant opportunity. I'm not experienced in this. You're here as a resource for me to use.
Plus, this would be a person that would go to the teachers and say, hey, here's some great opportunities for you.
And it would work vice versa.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So now, we would, we put a, like a, give them like a two-year contract, three-year contract? I mean, because if not, this could be something you could hire somebody and then kind of stuck with them.
Right. I would definitely recommend a two- or three-year contract. I think a one-year contract doesn't do them any service.
Right.
I think, I think a two-year would probably be beneficial. I would defer to Kathy on that, though.
How would that fall in, a position like this, where would that fall into? Do you have any idea? I mean, obviously, it wouldn't be able?
The person would likely work very closely with regard to our curriculum, because as we know, programming is wonderful, but we wanted to support the work that we're already graded on. So we certainly want that to represent in ways that it could help us, you know, even to smart boards. We have smart boards right now, but we would look at other ways. For example, I think the State Department put out an opportunity for, was it $35 million that they're willing to give away this next year for starting readers' grades? So we have an intent to apply. We are applying for that.
Right. And that's, that could potentially impact preschoolers through, I think, eighth grade.
And we received Race to the Top Grant?
We did.
Which was huge.
Gear Up.
The Gear Up Grant.
We did. We have over 900 currently for after-school programming.
Right.
We receive 1.6 for federal programming currently. We have a lot of little grants that we piece together for different, like Safe Routes to School that you've heard people talk about, smaller grants, but they all add up and make a difference. Our collaboration with the Children's Hospital has been instrumental in so many ways. We have some grants for them, but we also have people for them, and we certainly, we have a physician for them. So there's some other things that are going on that are supported with grant funding.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, the Safe Routes to School, that's done strictly through Hamilton County, right? That's just something that's going to, we're going to benefit from it, from work being done.
No, we applied in collaboration with the city of Norwood.
Right.
To the, what's the organization at the state level? All the high schools?
ODOT?
Yeah, yes.
Right.
So it's not through the county, but it's all the way straight to the state level. And that's been a little bit at a time, a little, as we've done a plan, we have a small planning grant, we had a small, you know, like each phase would apply for different pockets of funding to support our work with Safe Routes.
Right.
Ms. Robinson spearheaded that event, not only wearing the hat as a schoolperson, but also as a city resident. We've been extraordinarily fortunate in most of what we applied for, where we get, which is fantastic.
We've had straight A grants that we worked, that have been through in collaboration with Hamilton County, but that's one year ago. We've had some nice five-year grants, we certainly have Gear Up Grant, seven-year grant that has changed so much of our work at high school level in helping students prepare for what's to come after they graduate.
Right, yeah.
Is there any indication on Gear Up about a follow-up grant to that? Is that going to?
No, they, from the beginning, they've said, you were our chosen when they wanted to partner with us, and it's seven years. And then, the indication is that they want us to keep what's most powerful to us. So we know, learning this process, what's been the best part of it, but they won't be offering it again. But that doesn't mean there won't be something else that comes its way. And Deb is, Deb is a good leader in that regard, because good things do come to you once other organizations see you use their work, their money wisely, and you do good programming. So good things come our way sometimes, even when we don't expect it, because of our good work and that we're good stewards of those fundings that we've had opportunities for.
When does that seven years run out?
Okay, so the current?
This is the third year, I think?
Third year?
Yeah, so we've got four left.
So, so actually, the timing of this could actually be pretty beneficial, like we could piggyback off of that, and then if this newly created position, I mean, that could be one of their things, is to find the good thing to come after the Gear Up Grant goes away.
There's always so many grants that go unclaimed every year, and I'm sure that our teachers, with as busy as they are, don't always have time to go out and fish for those things. So having someone to be able, that literally just goes out and finds these lost monies would be really helpful.
Yeah.
It might be something that we want to look to other school districts, because you mentioned a school district does it. Maybe it would be a good research opportunity for us to see what's going on with other districts and just compare.
Absolutely, yeah. I don't want to rush into this, I want to take our time, but, but I definitely, you know, think it's worthwhile.
Well, I think, to answer Amber's question about the Gear Up, the percentage of grant money that's out there, I think seeing that's going to, it's going to help to see what percentage of our income is actually grant money, and what percentage we've applied for, maybe that we didn't get, and are missing out there. I don't know if that's possible, but if we could see that, that may be helpful.
Madam President, I did want to bring up with the.
Madam President, I did want to bring up with the Education Committee report, a number of items. Are we ready for those? The first one is, as you can know, we're already preparing for next school year. So we have the approval of the Norwood High School Program of Study, and that was given to as an exhibit. And then, also, we will be asking for approval of the following field trips. Our Winter Guard, of course, it's winter guard season, so there will be a number of places where they'll be competing. Our Silhouettes will also be competing in a number of places. And our middle school orchestra will be going to Trails and Thrills Music Festival. And then, of course, we're already working on conference for next school year, and those dates there are also listed. Any questions?
I do. I have, I have a question. So we're considering these competitions, field trips?
They are. They are considered field trips because they're more than 25 miles away from the school district. So anything that is over that has to be approved.
Okay. So, and just, just a question. So the previous league that we participated in, not the Miami Valley Conference, but the Southern Buckette Conference, there were a number of schools that were outside of that 25-mile radius. Were we approving field trips for the basketball team to go to Blanchester?
No. No.
Okay.
No, we wouldn't. But that, that would be a competition, again, that's part of the league that we belong to.
Right.
These are isolated events, and they're held in different places from year to year. So for example, the high school Winter Guard competition, this year it may be in Waynesville, next year it could be in Little Miami.
Okay.
And these are not organizations that are part of the, our conference that we're in.
Okay.
So this is not athletics at all.
Right, okay.
It's completely separate. Same with the Silhouettes. A lot of their competitions are held in different places.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, you know, many of them are more than 25 miles away.
Okay.
Great question. Thank you.
Okay. Personnel? So there are some personnel recommendations for approval later this month that we'll be voting on. The first one is student assistant, educational aide. Also, we have some supplemental contracts. We're trying to take care of our spring sports and get those folks in place. And Avenue's for Success has some club advisors that they also need to bring formally on board. And when someone is not already part of our certified staff, we put in there what you see number three, and that is non-certified coaches. So we have athletics, a varsity, winter cheerleading, and middle school winter cheerleading. And then, last month, we did accept Tyler Allsitt's resignation, but we want to change that resignation date from 2017 to 2018. He left us so he could do his student teaching experience.
Oh, perfect.
And that concludes our, my recommendations for personnel.
Questions? Discussion? All right. Item three is the Policy Committee report. Want to say that, or Kathy, you want to go ahead and just go through it?
We're just simply trying to...
Brandon will be the new policy. That's right. Sorry.
We're just simply trying to respond and make sure that we're giving all of our graduates opportunities to graduate. And so we are updating, there were a few changes in the graduation requirements. Christina, I hope you recall, two, there were two social studies as the area was impacted. We currently have four, four units of social studies required of all of our students, and we'd like to make that three. It doesn't reduce our overall amount. Our overall amount for graduates is still 21 electives. But what it does do, we've noticed when some of our students attend JBS, especially a special needs student, or a student perhaps who wanted to do ROTC, they run out of time in their schedule. And that social studies requirement, ours was above and beyond what the state requires. And that, that seemed to be what the hiccup was. They always got caught in not having enough time in their day to fulfill our fourth requirement of social studies. They could get their 21 hours because their day is full. But for those students, our, some of our special needs students that needed another bell to do a skills studies class to provide them some in-depth intervention, and also some students that wanted to do other specialized programming like ROTC, this would allow their schedule to be a little more free. They still would have three, correct, three units of social studies as required by the state, 21 credits as we are requiring, which is one credit over the current state requirement. So still in line with our, our credits overall, but just allowing a little freedom. Most of our students here at Norwood that are with us from freshman year to senior year will have four credits of social studies through our elective process. But this does allow some freedom so that students don't get caught in a trap, which is what we were finding. A handful of them, each year, we had to do a lot of problem solving to help them find their way to graduation, whether it be an online course, some summer work. It just wasn't quite right for students. So we're still in line with the state. We still are one credit above the state, just allowing for a little flexibility. If this is fine with you, what we would do between now and the board meeting is update that program of studies so that it quickly reflects this intent. Because otherwise, the program of studies that you approve will not be correct. But we wanted to bring this up tonight to make sure there weren't any questions. And if you say, oh, it's looking fine, then we'll start to make that adjustments for our program of studies that you would approve on Thursday would reflect these changes as well, all in one night.
Right. And that change is in the attachment that you sent, correct?
It is. It is, yeah.
By any chance, does the graduation requirement yet include civic, civil service hours, community service of any kind? I think it used to for honors, but does it require that for general graduation? Some district service?
It doesn't, it does not require for general graduation. We've seen it being woven into some of our coursework, but not as a requirement, as a standalone requirement. It is, currently, it is considered a pathway, your senior year, if you do not have all your 18 points, to do some community services over 120 hours. So that's where they indicate their, kind of their importance of that. But it's not an official requirement of all graduating seniors, like you might have seen a few years ago.
Okay. Who would I reach out to about discussion of opportunities for community service?
I'm probably a good person to start with.
Okay.
Because I could share kind of the things we do.
Okay.
And then, depending on your target audience, which is probably high school, with the high school, and they kind of outline in more detail what we currently already have going on. Because we do leave it in, we leave it in a great deal in our after-school program. It's part of our commitment. And then, during the school day, there are small opportunities for that, mostly with some of our honors kids.
Okay. I have a few ideas I'd love to discuss with you.
That would be fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. On to the Building and Grounds Committee report.
Yes, Madam President, we've got two, so right now, two uses for the facility would be Norwood Police Department of Social Service Exam, February 8th. And the Ohio Valley Football Association would be August 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, and September 10th, 17th, and 24th.
Any questions or discussion? Item five is the Finance Committee report. On the agenda, we will have the approval of the financial reports as listed.
In terms of the reports, those are all standard for this month. You did receive the Treasurer's Report as an exhibit. Forecast update, we're trending in line with expectations. Our actual versus estimated is where we expected to be. Expenditures are trending a little bit better than anticipated. Some of that has to do with some special education costs, so we'll continue to monitor that. But hopefully, that'll turn out to be some positive news for us by the end of June. I, we, you also see two more items on there that is the OSBA Annual Membership Dues, that's the annual process that you go through to approve that. And then, also, we have two board members attending new board member training. I think that's this month, if I remember right. So we welcome that, and are glad that they're able to take time out of their schedules to do that. It's important, and we appreciate it. Finally, I want to hand out just a couple of items. First, and this is just a kind of a refresher for those of you who have been on the board. If you remember, about two, two and a half years ago, we talked to you about the Ohio Checkbook Program, which is a program sponsored by State Treasurer Josh Mandell. And we were one of the early schools to get involved in that in terms of this area. And I just want to present to you again, the webpage is on there, the procedures for logging in. And we have our information go into that process every month, and you are able to find out individual check information, individual expenditure information, and also see how we are using our dollars on that. So I think it's a great resource for both the public and obviously for our board members as well, and it's a great tool of transparency. The second one, we, we went over this with you several months ago, it's a program called OnBase. And again, I have the website and add login information, although we did find this afternoon it was a some issue with the password that we had established for that, so we're going to get that fixed. But this program goes even farther. So if you want to see an actual documentation for, the support documentation for a board check, in fact, it's a little bit hard to read this small print, I acknowledge, but the check that's highlighted here is actually one that's on the check register that you have as part of this month's packet. So it gives you the opportunity to go in and look at those for yourself. But I also want to remind you at any point in time, and new board members give us the opportunity to do that, you don't have to do it that way either. If you have specific questions about anything, just email me, let me know, we'll research it and get the information. The one homework item that I have, and we'll invite Christina's help on that, is to, because it's going, it is, we don't have a code that shows, here's every single grant, but we have a number of grades already, and we need some help actually identifying some of those. The total I can get, but we'll need some help with that. But we'll get that out to you in the next few days. That's all I have.
Any other discussion items or comments?
I have one quick question. The annual membership dues for the OSBA, is that something we take care of, or is that